We will call to order the March 11th, 2019, meeting of the Royal Oak City Commission. We will begin with the invocation by Commissioner Kyle Dubach. Please rise, if you may, if you can.
Tonight, as we gather to make decisions on behalf of our community, may we aspire, in our thoughts, actions, and words, to conduct ourselves in a manner worthy of the trust our fellow Royal Oakers have placed in us. Let's strive for hope over cynicism, understanding over anger, and cooperation toward the greater good over division. Amen.
[inaudible 00:00:38]. [inaudible 00:00:40]. [inaudible 00:00:41]. [inaudible 00:00:42]. [inaudible 00:00:43]. [inaudible 00:00:44]. [inaudible 00:00:45]. [inaudible 00:00:46]. [inaudible 00:00:47]. [inaudible 00:00:48]. [inaudible 00:00:49]. [inaudible 00:00:50]. [inaudible 00:00:51]. [inaudible 00:00:52]. [inaudible 00:00:53].
We'll move now to the public comment portion of our agenda, some introductory remarks. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not individual commissioners. There won't be a public hearing about sidewalk assessments tonight, but if you are here to comment on that subject, you may speak during public comment, or we will allocate time for that when the item comes up on the agenda. If you do wish to speak tonight, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor pro tem, then come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so comments are limited to three minutes or less. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. Our city clerk keeps the timer. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time or email, to email or call the city commissioners with your comments. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we will address questions either when the agenda topic is discussed, or refer it to the proper city department if it's not a matter not on the scheduled agenda. Our city manager is also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. So who's first? Here in the front row.
My name is Linda Loopy, and I live at 4015 Auburn Drive in Royal Oak, 48073. And I am again here to speak to you about my continued frustration and rage over the condition of the house at 4303 North Verona Circle. No maintenance has been done or is done at this gutted property unless cited by the city, but thanks to a very diligent code enforcement officer assigned to our quadrant. Magically, this morning, a "for sale" sign appeared at this house. Coincidental? I think not. I have received no cooperation from the owner, located right across the street from our neighborhood on Woodward, despite a visit and numerous emails citing issues. I have also received very little assistance from the city. I asked how the city would verify extermination after issuing the February 20 citation for rats. No response. I asked about the process procedure to have this property condemned. The city's response? The city will not condemn this property. I have collected 207 signatures in the last four days of Royal Oak citizens, supporting my recommendation that this blighted house be condemned. I have reviewed the Royal Oak City codes, and clearly it supports the condemnation or public nuisance option. I have cited in a handout, which I will give to you in a few minutes, the pertinent sections of code. No more excuses, no more delays. Eleven years is long enough to tolerate this eyesore, which is now a health hazard in my neighborhood. How long will Royal Oak tolerate this blight in my neighborhood, and apparently in other areas of the city as well? In securing petition signatures, I was told by most every signee that there is a house in their neighborhood with the same issues. This is not an isolated problem. Maybe the solving of our situation can serve as a blueprint for other neighborhoods to seek relief from their blighted homes. But tonight, my concern is my neighborhood. So I'm asking the city to start the process to make this a public nuisance or condemn this property as soon as possible. With the proven rat infestation, broken glass, and holes in the walls, it is even more imperative that the house be cited as a public nuisance or is condemned, because when the weather breaks, it will smell and be an even bigger health hazard. The City Commission needs to realize that in addition to the downtown, it is the neighborhoods and residents who comprise the great town and contribute to its reputation. The City Commission needs to direct the city attorney to use existing language on public nuisance and condemnation and get this property condemned. Settling for anything less is just not acceptable. No more lip service, no more excuses. Our neighborhood is determined to get some resolution to this nightmare. Our goal for this property, the actual completed sale as soon as possible. Failing that, we will be back. We look forward to working with the city to finally, after 11 years, put an end to this nightmare. Now, since the "for sale" sign went up...
Thank you. That's three minutes. Okay, I have some handouts, so I'm going to give to you. Okay, thanks. Who's next? On the aisle here.
Hello, thank you. My name is Mary Benda. I live at 120 East Sunnybrook. We were just ravaged by the sidewalks. I'm complaining because I received a huge bill, $2,000, to degrade my property. I had four large trees removed in front of my house that did not need to be removed for these sidewalks. I have a huge...
Stump. That's... I don't have enough to pass through. I don't see how many... Pass it.
We have a huge stump that remains from a beautiful tree that was there, that's there. It wasn't removed from the sidewalks. It's an eyesore. I have an expensive home. It looks like crap driving up to my home, and now I have to pay $2,000 for this mess. I don't know recourse I have, but I'm disputing my bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Hand in the back.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Ercard. I live at 1100 Stevenson's Highway, Royal Oak, Michigan. And the reason that I'm here today is I am the artist that you may have seen in the Detroit Free Press or on Channel 7. I am against the anti-scavenging law currently in place in our city, and I just wanted to bring you a piece of art, kind of as a message of peace, and to think about my message. And I would like to provide the city with some information that I have. I've sent out emails, and I'm sorry if I've been disorganized. I'm new to this, and I will try to get the information organized and sent to you so that you may decide and discuss amongst yourselves what something that you would bring across the agenda. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is my gift. I call it "The Roots of Law."
I think that would be a fine addition to the city manager's office.
It's a right centerpiece for any table. I think that it's beautiful, and it is my wish to share it with the city.
I think that's a city clerk job to accept that. If you could leave it over there with her.
That would be fantastic.
Commissioner Bruce?
I was just going to say, the Royal Oak Commission for the Arts probably would have some good ideas as to what would be a good place to display that. So, thank you, and we'll find a good place for it.
It is signed, and I do appreciate your time and your efforts for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, yes, sir, in front here.
Hi, I'm Mick McGuire, and I live at 4456 Arlington. We have the home that was just mentioned, and there's another home within a quarter-mile of that house that's been vacant for almost 30 years, okay? And they get... What happens is they send out complaints about it, and the porch is falling down, but it seems like we should have some sort of law that after so many years, the house should have to be sold, or torn down, or something. Maybe there's some sort of law, because like I say, you're getting houses that are just... Houses are just for... I think it's actually been 29 years it's been sitting vacant, okay? And like this house that she was talking about has been 11 years. I think the city could maybe come up with some sort of blight law, or something to say, at a certain point, so many years, the house would have to be torn down, or sold, or done something with, because it's deteriorating our neighborhood, and I'm sure that if we got two of them in our neighborhood, there's got to be a lot more of them around the whole city of Royal Oak. I was wondering, maybe if you could research some sort of law, maybe Michigan has a law, or maybe we could start a law or something, or that we could come to a point to say, at a certain point in time, that this house has to be sold, or condemned, torn down, and done something with. Because that's two in our neighborhood. I don't know how many others are around the whole city of Royal Oak, but they certainly are blight and an eyesore, and something should be done. We need a law to start changing the situation, people just abandoning buildings and just letting them be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ashman.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashley. I live at Royal Oak Manor. The area between Sixth and Lincoln, and Main and Troy, in the next three or four years is going to be one of the most congested areas in the whole city. And the reason is OCC is going to reconstruct from Seventh to Lincoln, put their arts and culinary school down there. You're going to have Burtson-Catsman tearing up Parking Lot 7, and then on Williams, between Troy, on Sixth Street, you're going to have a six-story condo of 74 apartments or condos put in. I know that there is plan in the budget to put in slowdown islands like you did on Main Street, but those are only good for two times a day, Monday through Friday, morning rush hour, evening rush hour. If you've driven up Main after those hours, you know the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. They disobey the 25. What I suggest is you put in pedestrian lights. I keep saying this, because they will take care of the up-and-coming pedestrians. You're going to have students trying to cross the street at Main Street, and the way the traffic is now, those things aren't going to do any good. Put in the pedestrian lights. I've heard excuses, oh, it's going to cost so much. Well, what is a life worth? Please tell me, what is a life worth in this city? Because somebody is going to get killed out there. I was almost killed because people were speeding. Most of the traffic is speeding with talking on their phone or texting. Please put in the pedestrian lights, not the slowdown lanes. And this will... May cost a little extra money, but it will save lives, and I don't think we want Jeffrey Feiger back around the city of Royal Oak, if anybody remembers what he had done to this city. Another thing is, the DDA supposedly advises on parking. This commission has the right to override or go with it. Please think about changing the parking tickets for Royal Oak Manor from 45 to 25. That is a difference that will help us out greatly. Remember, we're living on a fixed budget. Some of us are really strained. It's either a food, or a prescription, or forget about the parking pass. No one should live like that. And on one other point, this has been the motto of city and their planning, okay? This is what you have done. You have no decent planning. You don't look ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Mr. Wolf.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. I want to just follow up with Mr. Ashley. You know, one thing he forgot to mention, Mr. Catsman is a very generous person. He should be an angry person after Bulgey stole Henry Ford Clinic from his property and moved it to... And lured them to go downtown here, where you've already paid for a nice parking structure for him to give away to them, and a $3 million property to give away to them. Well, besides that point, I want to get back to this point. These 25, 30 seniors, maybe five or six of them, have an extra pension from the railroad or from some company they work for. Maybe they can afford the $50 a month, but not only five or six. You're creating a great deal of stress on these people. Now, what Mr. Ashley forgot to mention, Mr. Catsman, in his generosity, offered that when his building goes up in about 18 months, he will allow parking on his property for those seniors for $25 a month. So I think this can be done tonight. You don't have to keep putting this off. It could actually be put on the agenda, if someone will make a motion to put it on the agenda, that for the next 18, maybe 20 months, okay, I'll just make it 18 months, $25 a month for those seniors. How much money can it cost? Enough, just probably no more than it could cost for a couple of surveys, you know, or other nonsense that you guys throw money at. I... My heart really goes out to these seniors, and being low-income myself, and in a situation that's similar, I would be furious if I was in that situation. I wouldn't know what to do. Now, the other thing is, I want to bring up this marijuana thing quickly. You guys decided to shove it down the taxpayers' throat. I voted for it because I wanted to decriminalize marijuana. I didn't want to open up pot shops all over Royal Oak. You had two recent deaths at the railroad tracks within five months due to alcohol. One person came up and said, "Well, pot smokers, they stay on the couch. They don't go running on railroad tracks." Look, you're going to bring in people that are going to go around the street mumbling loose joints, loose joints, $1, $2, whatever it is, and they're going to probably be sold to underage kids. Besides that point, anyone who mixes marijuana and alcohol might be in for a big surprise their first time, and when they step in their car, you don't know what's going to happen. You know, I can tell the drunks on the road in Royal Oak when I'm on Main Street and I'm driving south. I can see them leaving north on Main Street with their lights off at night, so...
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Okay, thank you for thanking me, and I hope I got my point across. Thank you.
Thank you. Way in the back, on my left.
Evening. My name is Pat Lee, 4524 Alhambres. You guys take 10 to come here, and I'll take 10 to come here, too. I'll be brief. The guys, on Agenda Item Number 10, as you guys know, I'm kind of passionate about the Normandy Oaks Park. Just wanted to... I'm not going to stick around for the whole meeting, but I'll watch it online. The two items of the agreement, which I think is great, and you guys put a lot of passion into it, saw the proposal for it, it's, you know, great. It's free money for the city. Just two questions I had. Item 3.4, about the maintenance of the trails and stuff, that the township, or, excuse me, the county is not going to be contributing. At the, I believe it was the February 26th meeting of 2018, one of the commissioners said, you know, "If you don't plan for the maintenance, don't build it." And if that's going to be discussed tonight, right, the maintenance cost of this trail system that's going to be in the bridge and things like that, just what your guys' thoughts are of that. And then the last one on here, Item 6.2, on the attachment, what does... What's the spirit of that, where it says that Oakland County Parks has final say, final decision on recreation and all activities? I look forward to you guys' debate back and forth. Several of the commissioners on the commission were part of the agreement, as well as I saw Dave in the audience, so he'll probably be able to answer some questions for you guys. And then lastly, this is just a personal thought. The proposal that went to the parks, it had a logo for Normandy Oaks, or, excuse me, for Robertson Brothers. I don't know if that was appropriate, but that's not for me to judge, so, thank you.
Thank you. A gentleman in front here.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Walsh, 4325 North Verona Circle, 26-year resident of Royal Oak, former teacher of Royal Oak. And I'm just three doors down from the house that Linda just spoke to, and one of the things, the Channel 4 story that you may have seen, interviewed my neighbor Kelly. Kelly's got a six-year-old and a three-year-old, and we've seen, you know, the neighbor who lives across the street on Normandy has seen a rat leaving the garage of this house and going right through to their yard. And he's caught five rats at that house. My wife refuses to go around the block, because that house scares the hell out of her. So, you know, I've... We started a Yahoo group, 21 years we've been in that house. We have 140 people in our neighborhood on that. I had the petition on my porch just for four days, and got 60 people to drive up in my driveway and sign this thing. This is a big deal, and it's, you know, I think what... Today, I came home for lunch, and there's that "for sale" sign, sitting on there for the first time in a long time. And immediately, I posted the picture and said, "Guess what?" And out of the 140 people that get this email, the responses were, "Yeah, right. In 30, 60, and 90 days, the house will delist, because no acceptable offers will be forthcoming. Therefore, slowly, the momentum will currently go away in our movement here to get this house taken care of. Or the property changes hands again to a buddy of the current owner, and nothing changes. Or the property actually sells, and the new owner does nothing, cited as a public nuisance by the courts, and it forces any owner to fix or face fines and jail time would be the optimal solution." But ideally, we just want a family to move in. We've got an amazing neighborhood, very supportive. When the city dropped off all this mulch in our parks, but they didn't have the money to spread it, we put together 75 people to spread the mulch. They chip in. It's an amazing neighborhood. And just for all the people that drive by on Normandy, I have so many people that just know I live near there, and they just say, "What is going on with that house?" And it's just an eyesore, and it seems like a no-brainer that we should be able to move forward on this. And Ms. Gibbs, I really want to thank you for coming out to our neighborhood last year on our neighborhood garage sale and taking a look at it. It really meant a lot to us. But, you know, I just... I do have the courage, I guess, to walk the dog by there, because he's a terrier and he likes rats. But it really shouldn't be, you know, his hobby that, you know, we're doing, okay? So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Karlowsky.
Good evening. Rick Karlowsky, 419 Virginia. Another gentleman took some of my thunder away. I want to talk about Item 10, the park thing. Basically, it's fine, except I don't see anything in the contract as to who has the final say about what goes on there. There's, I know the park, the counties that come together, they're going to talk to our folks, but sovereignty is the ability to say no, and there's nothing in the contract that I can see that gives us final say as to what events will happen when. And I would certainly hope that we amend the contract to make that quite clear, because I don't see it in the contract. Secondly, from the marijuana workshop you had last week, I'd like to commend our Chief of Police Donahue for bringing up a very big issue, I think, that is going to be here sooner than later, and that is, what are we going to do about neighborhoods? Some of you have children. I'm sure that you don't want to have your kids playing in the yard and have somebody else having an open marijuana consumption-by-smoke party, and with all that comes, not to mention, you know, open windows in the summer and other things. So, I am not an expert on how to take in the fruits of this herb, but we definitely need to take care of something about what could happen, and if there's, you know, an issue between neighbors. We have noise ordinances to prevent, or to clarify and codify what you can and cannot do. Certainly here, you're going to need to have something as far as noxious smells, or whatever you want to call it, with regards to consumption of marijuana. Finally, with regards to, well, another thing, with regards to the bar review, I'm having a little bit of issue with bars being able to dump their, proverbially dump their trash onto our sidewalks without calling the police department. We had recently somebody try and run down people after a fight in the bar that was just basically dumped onto our street. Secondly, has anybody investigated where those folks were who decided to, you know, play chicken with a train? You know, there's got to be something more to our bar review than just straight police calls. There has to be something in here where, how many incidents do we have that get dumped onto the street and then make a public issue out of it? I think we had one other time coming out of Mr. B., a guy went back to his car and got a gun and started running around. These should be in the bar review police reports, to how many issues get dumped onto our streets, and not just how many times do you call the police for assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gail McGuire, and I live on 4456 Arlington, and I'm concerned in making my neighborhood a better place to live. So I feel solving the problems we have in our neighborhood is the place to start, and that's why I'm here today. One of the main problems that we have are those two abandoned houses, the one at 4303 North Verona Circle, which has been abandoned for 11 years, and also the other one at 3902 Dukeshire, which has been abandoned for 29 years. These are both eyesores and irritations to everyone who lives in our neighborhood. I'm sure if something is not resolved on Verona Circle House, it will be sitting there vacant and decaying 20 years from now, like the house on Dukeshire. Why do the neighbors have to deal with this every day, to look at this decay? There have been people that have actually moved out of the neighborhood because of these houses. So please do something here. Enough is enough. People have been complaining about these houses for years, and the owners of these houses have no right to trash our neighborhood. They live elsewhere, and I'm sure if they had houses like this next to them, they would be all up in arms about it. So please help us, and please do something here, because we're all fed up with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right here.
Hi, I'm Sue Wells, 600 East Fifth Street, Royal Oak, but I do not come as a resident of Royal Oak this evening. I come as the manager of Parks and Recreation for Oakland County Parks. First, I'd like to thank John and Greg from Parks and Recreation for helping Oakland County Parks with this endeavor. We would like to invite you and your family to the Great Marshmallow Drop. It has historically been held at Kettleba Oaks. This year, we're putting $700,000 worth of investment to Kettleba this spring, so we had to move it. John and Greg were gracious to allow us to have it with them at Warden Park. It will be held on April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and is free to the public. Just to give you a warning, we have 15,000 marshmallows that are dropped out of a helicopter, of which kids can gather, under control, with 300 volunteers. These marshmallows can be turned in for a gift at the volunteer tent. So we hope to see you and your family and the community at the Great Marshmallow Drop.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, on the aisle?
My name is Karen Perslow. I live at 2515 Benjamin Avenue, and I see on your agenda, you're talking about the committee appointments. And I know you don't answer questions, but I would question myself how often a person would submit a request to be on every single committee and not be appointed to any one committee. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Is that Dr. Anderson?
Oh, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Douglas and city commissioners. I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. On February 11th, I reiterated our objection to the assessment for the new sidewalk adjacent to our property, but I didn't have time to publicly address the problems in Royal Oak's communication with all the affected property owners, so I'm back tonight. On or about February 1st, 2019, we received in the mail a letter dated January 28th, 2018, with the heading "Sidewalk Improvement Program Special Assessment Notice." Now, business communication from a major Royal Oak City Department is not an informal, casual writing situation. Why was it not proofread carefully enough to catch the error on the date? Why was the enormous, the erroneous URL not tested and corrected before sending the letter? Why were the people who called to ask about the problematic URL told...
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Is that Dr. Anderson?
Oh, good evening, Mayor Protem Douglas and City Commissioners. I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. On February 11th, I reiterated our objection to the assessment for the new sidewalk adjacent to our property, but I didn't have time to publicly address the problems in Royal Oak's communication with all the affected property owners, so I'm back tonight. On or about February 1st, 2019, we received in the mail a letter dated January 28th, 2018, with the heading Sidewalk Improvement Program Special Assessment Notice. Now, business communication from a major Royal Oak City Department is not an informal, casual writing situation. Why was it not proofread carefully enough to catch the error on the date? Why was the enormous, the erroneous URL not tested and corrected before sending the letter? Why were the people who called to ask about the problematic URL told, "Don't know" by whomever answered the phone? And the phone number on the notice is a direct number to the engineering department, division, sorry. And why did whoever answered those phone calls not offer to research the issue and get back to the people? I am very grateful that the commission on February 11th understood these problems and insisted on reissuing the notice, and I thank you. I am still bewildered that the commission, I'm sorry, I'm still bewildered that the engineering division did not admit the errors, apologize, and volunteer to make amends. I have other questions about the content of the communication. Why was it not a personalized mail-merged notice with the assessment figure individually specified? Or, at least, why was the chart not included with the generic print notice? It's one piece of paper. Postage costs would not change, and printing one piece of paper for the approximately 85 people on the list would not be really cost prohibitive. In such a professional writing situation, moreover, the printed chart should automatically have been included since there's no guarantee that all recipients use the internet. As president of our homeowners association, I knew that two of these families did not have internet, so I printed the material and delivered it to them. I should not have to have done that. Finally, the first notice gave residents less than two weeks to prepare to object to the assessment. Particularly in late January and early February, a fair number of Michiganders head for warmer climes, and a notice period of less than two weeks really wouldn't allow time for forwarded messages. Such unprofessional communication demonstrates the profound disrespect for Royal Oak's taxpaying citizens.
Thank you. Yes, in the back, on my left.
I brought visual aids. I spoke a few meetings ago about the embarrassing condition of downtown Royal Oak in our area, and you can see by those photographs, it's outrageous. It hasn't gotten any better, and these are just from around the block here. Past the theater, up and down 11 Mile. Are we going to clean this up, or are we going to have to continue to look at this stuff? If code enforcement were to come to my house and see this, I would be ticketed. It's outrageous. I walked to the library, I walked from the library today, I volunteer there, I've been volunteering there for years, to get lunch on Main, and I couldn't even walk on 11 Mile Road. Both sides are tore up, there's orange barrels rolling. I had to walk in the street and back on the sidewalk, dart in between cars, through the parking lot. We just had this huge book sale, I'm going to get this in there too. We just had this huge book sale, four days' worth. We're down $1,000. And I want to say that's parking, I want to say that's how crappy the downtown looks, I don't know. But $1,000, that's a lot of 50-cent books, we're going to have to peddle. And we finance everything, all the special programs at the library. The friends do that, we do that. That's it. Only 136, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir, in the red.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners. My name is Randy Wells. I live at 142 East Sunnybrook. And I, like Dr. Anderson, am a little confused about the sidewalk issue. Is anybody tired of hearing about sidewalks? Item 8 on your agenda says that there's a special assessment resolution going to happen tonight, but you said in the beginning, no public hearing is not, a little confused about that. But that's not really why I'm here. Not sure about what I'm going to do about a special assessment, taking it to tribal, the tax tribunal, but I did look at the instructions, the paper filing instructions for the special assessment appeal. One of them says, "Did you protest the assessment at the hearing held to confirm the special assessment role? Indicate whether petitioner protested at the hearing to confirm the special assessment role." And that's just what I'm doing to cover my bases. I'm protesting the special assessment role. Thank you.
City clerk will make note of that. Now, anybody else? Very good, thank you all for your public comments. I'm going to move on to item 5 on our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, Commissioner Levaser?
I'm going to move to approve the agenda, however, I do want to add one item, and that's to revisit the issue of the concrete contract that we have with the police station from two weeks ago.
So, that would be item 11 on our agenda. Is there support for that? I'll second that. Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah, I believe that when we, when the commission approved the concrete subcontract two weeks ago was based upon a premise that has turned out not to be accurate, and that is that the lowest bidder didn't follow the bid instructions specifically with regard to prevailing wage and offering that. And my exploration of the issue has failed to reveal that that was ever part of the bid instructions for the subcontractor. I've been looking at this for at least the last two and a half weeks, 17 days is when I asked very specifically, where is it that this was given to subcontractors to indicate they must include this within the bid instructions or within their bids? And I've yet to see, it's yet to be pointed out to me specifically where that was included in the instructions to the subcontractors or the proposed subcontractors. So, in this instance, I believe that the lowest bidder, which was a good $300,000, less than the second-highest bidder, submitted a bid that was compliant with the instructions that was given to them. And I think that's an issue that we need to look at again. It's a significant expense to the taxpayers of the city, it's something that we should be fully aware of and address here.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Levaser pretty much covered it with that.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, the nays are Commissioners Dubbuck and Perush. Motion carries, we'll add that to the end of our agenda. Moving now to the consent agenda, are there any items that people would like to remove from that agenda for additional discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Macy, Commissioner Perush. The consent agenda therefore will consist of city commission meeting minutes February 25th, 2019, appointments committee recommendations, claims from March 1st and March 12th, award of purchase orders, award of contract S-1903, 2019, spot sewer repairs, grant of traffic safety and signal easement road commission for Oakland County, and then one receive-and-file non-action item, the police department 2018 annual report. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carries. Moving on to item 7, Michigan Liquor License Commission Establishments, is this the chief or?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Commission, the police department has completed its annual review of all on-premise liquor establishments and found eight were issued violations in 2018. The police department continues to conduct yearly alcohol decoy operations and checked every on-premise establishment last summer. Seven violations for sale to a minor were issued to the following establishments, Piology, Royal Oak Tap House, Old Detroit City Grill, Rope Brewery, Prano, Gus's Fried Chicken, and Royal in Bar. The police department has applied for and obtained a grant to continue these decoy operations and will be beginning them shortly and continue them through the summer and fall. The remaining violation occurred on January 28th, 2018, when the police department responded to a large fight at Cantina Diablo's. Subsequent investigation revealed an underage patron was highly intoxicated and became involved in a fight with security. He was arrested along with two other subjects for assault and battery. A violation for allowing fights on the licensed premises was issued by the police department to Cantina Diablo's. Police department had had several meetings with the owner of Cantina Diablo's to try to mitigate any future problems, but as you know, they closed and have reopened as Diamond Steakhouse. Since the transition, the police department has not responded to any significant issues at that location. Throughout 2018, the police department has worked collaboratively with the owners of Mr. B's to mitigate any significant issues there. Total calls for service at Mr. B's dropped dramatically, and we believe this is a result of the open dialogue we had and the changes we had to their operation suggested. And we've noticed a distinct improvement there. O'Toole's did experience two critical incidents in early 2018, which prompted several meetings between the police department and the owner of O'Toole's. The owner was open to suggestions and actually decided to just completely redo his entire security team and contract out with a private security team. Since that change, we've noticed that there has been a significant improvement at O'Toole's. The police department continues to work collaboratively with each establishment in identifying potential issues and properly addressing them before they can escalate. We also maintain a high visibility patrols in the CBD during peak bar times. All liquor license renewal fees have been paid to the clerk's office. Additionally, the fire department and building department have conducted their annual reviews and inspections of all the on-premise liquor establishments. Jason Craig of the building department and Andy Blevins of the fire department state there are no significant issues with any MLCC licensed establishment. The treasurer's department, which submits a separate report on all unpaid water bills and tax bills, has told us this morning that all the establishments are either up to date on their taxes and water bills or have worked out an acceptable payment plan with the treasurer's office. In closing the report, you'll find a six-year statistical summary of all our calls for service, a synopsis of those calls for service, and also that we provided a link to Oakland County Food Service Inspection Report. It's a huge report, so we couldn't include it. At this time, the police department is not recommending that the commission recommends denial on any liquor establishment.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the chief? Commissioner Levaser?
This may be slightly off-topic, and I don't expect you to have an answer today, but one of the concerns I have is what percentage of our resources, public safety resources, are being dedicated to the policing of liquor establishments, primarily in our central business district? And I'm wondering if we've ever accumulated statistics and we've got a sense of what the cost is for the community in doing so, and if not, if that's something that we may be able to get.
Yes, the simple answer is, we've done that before, I don't have an exact number, but, you know, we're busy in our downtown, although this last year, we've noticed we've been significantly less busy. But we're busy on Friday and Saturday nights between 11:00 and 3:00 in the downtown. Those are the hours when we're really busy in the downtown. We're really not busy in the downtown other, you know, to a significant degree outside that time. We do staff very heavy for those nights, and a lot of that is overtime, so it's not like the other areas of the city are unpoliced. But occasionally, there are issues, like a couple of weekends ago, where virtually all our resources were downtown, we had a really, really unusual weekend, a lot of tragedies, so we were dealing with that.
As far as putting together a report, what would be involved in doing that? So, we could put, I simply want to understand numbers. So, if the central business district is not contributing enough to cover this, I want to know that, so that when it comes time for us to talk to the DDA, we know what the numbers are.
I could provide you hours, that's easy enough to do as far as the numbers, it gets a little bit tricky because different people have different pay rates, but I could put you the amount of hours that would be fairly easy to pull together.
Mr. Donahue, how many police officers does the DDA pay for?
They give us a set number, so it's not really a, they don't say, and off the top of my head, I don't have that number, maybe Mr. Johnson knows that off, but, oh, sorry. Maybe not.
Sorry, I was trying to look something up. So, what was the question?
The question is, how many police officers does the DDA pay for?
Three.
Three. So, we do have some support coming from the DDA already towards our policy.
And that was changed a few years ago to where the DDA just automatically pays it. They used to require the police department to submit basically an hourly billing.
Ah, okay. Any other questions for the chief? What action do we need here?
No action, since we're recommending non-renewal, if that's what you're inclined to do.
Okay, great. Item B, I'm assuming this is yours as well?
It is.
Candido Tacos.
Okay, the police department has received a request to review a new proposed plan of operation for Candido Tacos 14 LLC, to be located at 310 South Main, which is the former location of B-Spot. Candido Taco is owned by, okay, by the holding company there, sorry, is equally owned by Joseph Kahn, Kahn, Thomas, DeSantis, and Jonathan Adams. The applicants purchased a liquor license for $155,000 and plan to spend approximately $710,000 on renovations, which includes new furniture, fixtures, equipment. They'll be leasing the building from Wind River Properties for approximately $9,600 Mr. Kahn is the president of Revolution Holding Incorporated and has been actively involved in the restaurant business for the last nine years. They currently operate seven Candido Tacos restaurants in Ohio, one in Indiana, and two in Pennsylvania. Mr. Kahn is responsible for the overall operation of these locations and has a responsible history of operating liquor license in these states. Mr. Adams and Mr. DeSantis are investors and not involved in the daily functions of the establishment. LCC check was done on all 10 Candido Taco locations, and the following, only one violation was found for allowing consumption of an alcohol beverage after 2:30, that was in Pennsylvania. We contacted the local departments in Ohio, Indiana, and Pennsylvania where these Candido Tacos operate. All jurisdictions report no significant issues with any of the locations. The applicants have employed Corey Hightower to, as the general manager for the first Michigan Candido Taco location. He has been in the restaurant business since 2010 and has successfully operated several locations in Portland, Oregon. If approved, Candido Taco will operate a full-service restaurant and bar. Candido Taco's menu will feature a build-your-own taco concept that will be open for both lunch and dinner. Guests can choose exactly how they want their meal prepared, from toppings to shell. The drink menu will include a full bar, but specialize in a variety of margaritas, tequilas, and Mexican beers. The proposed hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. Kitchen will remain open until closing each night, with last call for service alcohol be 15 minutes prior to closing. The food-to-alcohol ratio is expected to be 60% food, 40% alcohol. Candido Tacos will have approximately 3,200 usable square feet. Interior seating will be for 112 patrons, including 13 seats at the bar. The applicants are also requesting to continue using the existing outdoor service area with seating for eight patrons in accordance with the approved sidewalk cafe. The applicants are not requesting either an entertainment or dance permit. Our findings indicate that the applicants meet the necessary requirements to be granted this request. We do not anticipate that this establishment will cause any additional strain on police resources. If approved, the applicants will have to comply with all planning, zoning, and building requirements and restrictions.
Thank you, chief.
I think the applicants are here.
Great, any questions for the chief? So, we'd be happy to hear from the applicants. Tell us about Candido Tacos.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. My name is Steve Grobel. I am the attorney for Candido Tacos. I also happen to be a Royal Oak resident. With me this evening is Jason Siegler. He's Candido Taco's Vice President of Real Estate and Development. So, Chief Donahue sort of was ticking off all of the things on my list that I wanted to sort of point out to you, and I guess sort of most importantly, I want you to understand, we are a restaurant, we are a build-your-own taco is our concept. From start to finish, it's all very fresh ingredients, from right from the shell to the salsas, the toppings, the guacamole. They do, they have a nice selection of liquors, particularly a nice margarita menu to go with your Mexican food. This is margarita menu to go with your Mexican food. This is the first Michigan Candido Tacos location. They... After Mr. Siegler, I'm sure can speak to it, because he's the one who found it, but I thought that Royal Oak would just make an excellent location for the first Candido Tacos. Seven, seven, eight are in Ohio. They started in the Columbus area. There's one in Indiana, a couple in the Pittsburgh area. They have been very successful. They... Each one is sort of unique. They have a concept where Candido Tacos will bring in local artists who will paint the interior walls with a theme, and there will be a connection to sort of Royal Oak or the Detroit area. So each restaurant is different. It's not entirely cookie cutter. We are keeping the sort of the shell of the restaurant, where they're moving the kitchen back a little bit and give us a little bit more seating, some new furniture and some lighting, but the vast majority of the plant is going to stay the same, although we are putting in, as the chief mentioned, some fairly significant dollars into renovating and getting this to where we like it. I did want to point out to you, with the 10 restaurants, they have had only a single liquor violation among those 10 sites, and that violation was for a couple of chefs who were having a drink at 2:30 after closing. So not a single underage service, not a single intoxicated person service over the course of 10 restaurants. And as a liquor licensing attorney, I can tell you, that is a sign that we've got a good operator, somebody who takes their obligations and responsibilities regarding service of alcohol very seriously. You don't get that if you're a sloppy operator. So we are happy to answer any questions. Mr. Siegler is very familiar with the nuts and bolts and the particulars of a Candido Taco's operation and what this one's going to look like. And so we'd be... If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Commissioner Perush.
The description of the operation and your track record in the other states is excellent. So I have absolutely no problems with the concept. But we have other Mexican restaurants downtown or close to downtown, including one that's going to be relatively close to you. I'm assuming you have... You certainly are aware of that, and you have taken that into consideration in terms of whether or not this location is appropriate and whether or not it's going to be too close to other purveyors of the same kind of food in a way?
Yeah, we have. We operate in harmony with competitors and complimentary concepts alike. We don't see that as the issue. We feel there's enough demand for that segment in this market, being the dynamic restaurant market it is, and we look forward to helping them serve their guests.
Okay. Commissioner Gibbs?
And I have the same item to address as Commissioner Perush. Our ordinance 430-5D 2, 3, and 14 specifically addresses appropriate relation to buildings and land use, concentration in capacity of similar establishments in the city. And I am concerned that with the Taco Mesa Tacos being directly next door, correct? Directly next door?
Yes.
That... And then there's... What's the Detroit Taco place over by... Imagine?
The theater.
I can't recall the address of it. That... How has this been addressed, or how has communication been with these other two owners of the other two establishments?
From our perspective?
Well, from your perspective, yes, because I guess I want to know that you've directly addressed it. But also, you know, we have an ordinance directly addressing this, and that, you know, has the DDA or has planning taken these things into consideration? City Attorney Gillum might best be able to answer that. Sorry to throw you under the bus.
The only point I would make for the commission tonight is that the issue that's before you tonight is a request to approve the plan of operation for the business, not the actual transfer of the underlying liquor license itself. With current MLCC regulations, the city commission doesn't have the authority over the transfer. So the question specifically is whether or not you're comfortable with the approved plan of operation, not with the license being at this location.
Okay. We have a saying at the planning commission. We're not the competition police. They're coming into this market, I suspect they're coming into it with their eyes wide open and know what their competition is, and their competition now knows who they are, and it's a free market. Anything else for... Commissioner Vasor?
Yeah, well, and forgive me, I simply am not familiar with your restaurants. I just haven't been to one. So I'm trying to get a sense of what style of restaurant it is, whether it's closer to a fast food place, more of a sit-down place, a long-sit-down place, or if it's really moving the people through quickly, or what type of model it is.
It's a full-service, sit-down restaurant, table service. You order from servers, and they bring your food back to your table. It also has a bar, and these services, it's a fairly quick service, so it's not a... You know, you could in and out as quickly as you want. It's a... You order on a ticket, so you... You know, there's menus at the table, and you can build your taco from, you know, filling out a ticket with any item you'd like on it, and your server takes that, puts in the order, and brings it back to your table. So it's a casual, very laid-back atmosphere, but it is full-service, you know, with servers taking your orders and bringing your food to your table.
All right. So it's not fast food, like a Taco Bell?
No, not fast food. It's full-service.
Commissioner Dubach.
I think it's a cool concept. I'm sure you know your business well. I'm just curious, is there... What particularly, you know, brought you to downtown Royal Oak? So you've seen success in other communities. Do you see similarities with demographic or the business climate, or what specifically attracted you to our mainstream?
Yeah, it's the, you know... We see Royal Oak as a very dynamic restaurant market with, you know, it's become an entertainment and restaurant destination, and, you know, we feel it would be a great first location in Michigan for us, with all the theaters and the cultural attractions in the area, all the added residential that's coming and that's here now, and the synergy of the other restaurants and entertainment up and down the street we're on. And we feel it's a great first location for us in the market. We're very excited about it.
Right. Welcome. Support. Commissioner Macy, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next item, chief, Michigan By the Bottle Tasting Room.
Yes, this is a little bit of an unusual request. We received requests from... This memo is actually... There's a little bit of a typo. You're actually... It's a request the city commission needs to approve this license. With all the recent changes at the MLCC, they've really eliminated a lot of local control on these, but for some reason, this is what they want local control over. I don't really understand it. But the police department has received a request to review and amend the plan of operation for Michigan By the Bottle, located at 29932 Woodward Avenue. Michigan By the Bottle currently operates as a tasting room, offering wine from eight separate wineries. Each winery is licensed separately by the MLCC. The applicants are requesting to change one of the wineries that are currently offering wine for consumption and purchase at their tasting room. As I said, these... This change requires local government approval before they can apply to the MLCC to change. We have a list of the current wine... The current wineries that they have license to, they're requesting to phase out Chateau de Bay and instead feature wine from SP Grossnickel. No other changes to the existing plan of operation, hours of operation, or floor plan. We have no objection to this request.
Questions for the chief? You see, we have the applicants here. Welcome. Tell us what's afoot.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners and Chief. As the chief explained, there's been some changes at the MLCC level regarding local approval for some of our licensing. We're licensed a little bit different than most establishments that serve wine or liquor. We don't have a Class C. We're actually partnered with our eight partner wineries throughout Michigan. So we are licensed as off-site tasting rooms for all eight of those wineries, which requires us to have a license, off-site tasting room license, for each of the wineries. Over the last few years, when the MLCC rules were a little bit different, we have switched some wineries, and basically, we ended our licensing with some of our past wineries and brought in new wineries. But with the changes that recently occurred, it required us to come before you. So basically, all we're doing is we are taking one winery that we are currently partnered with, and they are kind of ramping down some of their production, so we are bringing in a new winery. It won't change anything that we're doing, except that we'll have some wine available from 45 North.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? I just want to say, I've been there a coup... Oh, sorry, Commissioner.
No, I was just going to move approval of this change.
Zero support. Commissioner Vasor, now I'll say, I've been there a few times. I like wine. I like Michigan wines, and I like going there, and I like your entertainment, too. So...
Thank you very much.
So happy to see your...
I've seen Mr. Johnson as well.
Still around. He's part of the entertainment?
Only after I've had the wine.
What happens at the tasting room stays at the tasting room.
Any other discussion of the motion? Oh, Commissioner Perush.
Nothing to what you're doing, which is a fine job. But it just seems to me that the Liquor Control Commission, or maybe it was legislatively, I'm not sure, in making you do this now, come back before local officials and go through the police department and have them create a report and have it come to us, put it on the agenda, all that time and effort and human, just to switch out one winery from another? That is crazy. It's just... I'm sure it's driving you nuts, and everybody else as well. I have no idea what position you're in to do that.
It's a highly specialized part of the LCC requirements. They're considered an off-premises tasting room for the winery.
But even so...
And she not only has to maintain eight licenses here, they've got three tasting rooms. They have to maintain a separate license for each winery at each location.
We have nearly 30 licenses across our three locations. So this is going to be fun now across all the locations if we need to swap someone out, you know?
And it was a legislative change. I think it was passed in maybe December, and then they just started to implement it in early January.
Blamed up.
So we feel bad for you guys, too, that you have to go through this for...
We're happy to hear from you. Well, anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion on the table. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Happy to have you. Next on the agenda, item eight, Special Assessment Standard Resolution Five. I suspect this is Mr. Callahan. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, or Mayor Protem, sorry. This particular item was held over from the February 11th, 2019 meeting. There's a resolution before you this evening to confirm standard resolution number five. It lists the 84 properties and the dollar amounts assigned to each one of them. The commission letter basically outlines how we got to this point, and that... We sent out a revised letter renotifying the properties that they had the right to protest at the city commission before they go to the tax tribunal, if that was their intent. Right now, we have... In standard resolution five is the rate which we bill properties that ask for a payment plan. It is 6%. And the city assessors' letter is also attached as reference for the standard resolution and the standard resolution approval.
Questions for Mr. Callahan. Mr. Vasor?
I take on this list as a consolidation of those that are simply having flags replaced, as well as those getting brand-new sidewalks. Is that accurate?
There are properties in this particular list. It just lists their total special assessment. It does not break out those corner properties where they had some done on existing sidewalks and some done for new sidewalks on the side street or in front of their house.
I... Maybe I need to restate it. There's some brand-new sidewalks in here. Is that correct?
Each one of these properties listed has a brand-new sidewalk, where none existed before.
Okay, so none of this is people who simply had a flag here or a flag there that needed to be replaced? This is all brand-new stuff?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. I think I heard two new protests from public comment today. Is that... You're understanding, Ms. Hollis? Did we receive any other protests via writing?
Yes, we did. That's the full list, unless you want me to read it.
Feel free.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. And I'm only referring to the ones that we didn't have four weeks ago.
March 1st, Gary Urick, at 328 East Sunnybrook. March 11th, Judith K. Rogers, at 705 Lexington. Again, 311, Ivan and Mary Benda, 120 East Sunnybrook. 311, Susan Toebusch, 324 Lexington. 311, Christina STEIUK, 237 Woodlawn. And 311, George LEICHTWIS, doing business as GML Enterprises, 1500 Nurse Stevenson.
Okay. I'm just... I suspect we've got all the protests we're going to get. I do believe it would be appropriate to ask if there's anyone else in our audience here tonight who may have an interest here.
As I intend to do. Stating first, noting that law requires a public hearing on this, which we did hold on February 11th. We apologize for the errors that were in that notification, and that's why we've held this discussion over until this date. While we're not required to have another public hearing, yes, it does seem fair to allow people to come to the microphone and ask for their rehearing. Is there anyone here who would like to do that, who didn't comment during public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring that back to the table. Is there... Are there any more questions, or is there a motion to approve resolution number five? Commissioner Dubach, Mr. Perush, any further discussion? Mr. Perush?
The only thing that I would add is, you know, we all are very apologetic, the staff and us, about the errors in the notice. I should just point out, though, that this city sends out thousands, not hundreds, but thousands of notices and letters every year on an annual basis. And this is the first time that I think that I can recall in my period of time up here that we've actually had to redo or hold over a hearing because the assessment had significant errors in it that were so substantial, not substantial, but which really affected the outcome of the whole process. So I think that people need to keep that in mind, that, yes, there were errors in that letter, but we send out not hundreds of thousands, but tens of thousands of notices and letters every year. And this is the first time that I can recall where we've ever had to redo anything because of the errors in the notice.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, Commissioner Vasor?
I'm not going to support the resolution. It basically comes down to this. When I think of special assessments, that is an indication that some work that's performed by the city is bringing some special benefit, special value to particular parcels of property, as we heard time and again from the people in the neighborhoods affected here. These were sidewalks that they didn't want, that they didn't benefit from, that actually, in many instances, diminished their enjoyment of their properties. I just don't think that this is fair to them. I don't believe that we meet the criteria for a special assessment.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbs?
And I will not be in favor of this. I will not be voting for this resolution either, for essentially the same reasons. And I... To drive down the street, you can see that it has not benefited the neighborhood. Maybe for the soccer moms across the street, or the soccer parents across the street, for the Realtor Park, but other than that, nobody is benefiting from the sidewalks being forced into their front lawn.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Award of Contract Public Library Facade Improvements. Mr. Callahan?
Take it, just because nobody from the library is here. You can see...
They're here.
Oh, are they?
Oh, I'm sure they're happy to have you take it.
Oh, my gosh. Excellent. I thought they'd be in the back sitting with the rest of us.
Hello there.
True, you were actually looking for Mary, weren't you?
I...
And who do we have here?
I'm Emily Dumas. I'm the library director for Royal Public Library.
Welcome.
Roxanne Plater, board member, board of trustees of the library.
And welcome to you, too. What's afoot here? And welcome to you, too. What's afoot here?
We are asking for approval to accept the lowest bidder for the library facade improvement, which is replacement of the roofing panels.
Very good. Any questions for the library board members? Anything to supplement that, sir?
I will add that, you know, whenever engineering bids out something, we contact the bidders. We contact their references. I did contact the LowBitter Heritage Contracting LLC. They're a general contractor. They do construction management. They're not doing the vast majority of the work. They're just overseeing the work. The gentleman who runs that company told me that some of his subcontractors do provide prevailing wages. He himself doesn't at his company, but I know that was one of the big reasons why this was placed on the regular agenda and not on the consent agenda. So I wanted to say that I checked into that.
Thank you. Any questions for the library representatives? Thank you very much for your service. Welcome. Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this resolution, approving this.
Commissioner Lavasser?
For it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The same. Motion carries. Approval of inter-local agreement in Normandy Oaks Park.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city commissioners. November 26, 2015, the city commission approved the creation of the Oakland County Royal Oak Normandy Oaks Park Committee. Since then, city staff met with Oakland County Parks on September 5th, 2018, and met numerous times to develop a partnership that would benefit the city of Royal Oak and Oakland County Parks. This agreement was approved by the Oakland County Parks Commission on February 6, and two subcommittees of the Oakland County Commission, the Health Communities and Environment Committee, and the Finance Committee, which will provide over one million, spread over three years, to the Normandy Oaks Park. The three phases of the Oakland County Parks proposal include funding for a trail system, which is roughly $521,000, the nature area, which is roughly $276,000, and the bridge, which is roughly $213,000, totaling to an amount of $1,010,650. Oakland County will still be allowed to include their branding on signage for these features. The city of Royal Oak will retain full ownership and control over the use of the park, and staff will schedule their soccer fields, pavilions, splash pads, and other areas. The city will also be responsible for maintaining the park. And Oakland County is interested, Oakland County Parks is interested in bringing programming to Normandy Oaks and the other city parks as well. These features are all, are all part of the master plan, but with this partnership, it will streamline the completion of the park and provide a rare opportunity for Oakland County Parks to participate in a significant park facility in southern Oakland County. We thank Oakland County Parks and the staff that worked on this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have anybody from, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lavasser?
Thank you very much. Just doing a little follow-up with regard to the maintenance. Do we have a sense of what cost may be to provide the maintenance that this contract calls for?
Not at this time, but there are, I believe the taxes from the Robertson Brothers properties will be going towards the maintenance of the actual park in total.
Okay. Can you give us a sense of what, some of that, I mean, the signage, for example, doesn't sound like it'd be particularly expensive, but I want to get a sense, you know, what's your thoughts on whether it's a significant expense or relatively minor expense, that sort of thing?
For the, for the signage?
For the maintenance.
Or for the maintenance of the trails?
A maintenance called for by the contract.
I mean, it'd probably be typical maintenance, mowing, hedging, weed eating. I would, I would probably say roughly, you know, what, $50,000 a year? $50,000 a year?
Is that additional, or is that, would have been in there anyway?
Would have been in there.
Would have been in there anyway, eventually.
The contribution that Oakland County Parks is really enabling us to complete the master plan as originally laid out in Phase One. We were going forward with this park, anyway. And what this contribution does is it gives us a little maneuver room to complete this park as we promised the residents it would be completed in Phase One. Because even with this contribution, we'll be coming back March 25th with the, hopefully with the bids for the award of the construction. It's still a very tight budget.
These items are, were already in Phase One?
No.
No.
They were in the master plan.
They were in the master plan. The, the nature trail was in Phase One. Par, par, portions of the nature trail were in Phase One. The bridge and, the, the other two items, the bridge and-
The completion of the trails were in the master plan.
Yeah. But, but, but the first $500,000 was, was what was, was in Phase One.
We, we had actually reduced it to be an aggregate paving.
That's correct. It would be hard surface now.
But this will now be a, a real pavement.
Okay. And again, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of how, I mean, whether we'll get sticker shock from the maintenance, or if it's something that just would, would be fairly minuscule.
Well, depends on your definition of minuscule. But, but it will be a contribution. It will be a combination of contractors and city employees to complete the work.
Commissioner Macy?
Just, I just want to follow up quickly. That my understanding that we had talked about before is that the tax money from the Robertson Brothers' house, the development, would be going towards this. And what I heard was that that was going to be about $200,000. Our estimate was, that, that tax is coming in?
$150,000.
I think it was $150,000 was my estimate. But let's, let's clarify. You cannot designate that the taxes will permanently go to this purpose. What you and future commissions can do is appropriate an equivalent amount each year.
I got it. We've said it at this table before. The commission that, that was sitting at this table when that, when this deal was done, said, this is what we plan to do. The commission that's sitting at this table now has made that same plan, but it is, it is dependent on the, the people who are sitting here to make that plan going forward. I think we understand that. I just was clarifying about the money, that $50,000 coming out of the $150,000. I, I just wasn't sure if that was clear. I was going to ask, two questions. One was about the events that the Oakland County is planning to run. They said that they're going to have, they can, they have $10,000 to $20,000 as their goals for their events. Could you talk a little bit more about what those events look like and what the planning of those would look like in conjunction with our city parks?
I'm going to call Sue Wells up from the Oakland County Parks, so be able to explain more the types of programs they would be able to run.
Joined perhaps by Commissioner McGilvery and Commission Chair Woodward. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarification on the programs that Oakland County Parks will be, be running. Our intent is to run regional programs that will service not only Royal Oak, but may service the outlying area. We, our, our goal is not it to get into soccer programming and day camp programming, that you already have a wonderful staff that already does. We already have programs in existence. We already bring our nature center program, our nature centers to Star Park and run nature programs. Our intent is to bring some of our inflatables, our stay-and-play, to your parks. So they aren't a real extent, they're free to the public. So it's not a charge-based program, and it's for all ages. I hope that clarifies it a bit.
Hang on, Commissioner Macy?
In terms of the timing of those events, would you be working with our Parks Department to determine that, and how would that work?
Under the contract, we're to meet once a year on setting up these programs.
I think I had Commissioner Dubach, then Lavasser, then Gibbs?
Oh, sure. I, I didn't have a question. I just want to make sure that we're all clear that we're not doing things we didn't already plan on doing, we didn't already plan on paying for maintenance for. There is no additional cost here. There's an additional million dollars to expedite our schedules. This is a huge win for our residents and our taxpayers, moving forward the full implementation of the park that we promised. So it's, it's all good things. There's no sticker shock because it's a million new dollars to contribute towards something we were planning to do, as we told our residents we would do, based on all their feedback. So, hooray, and thank you.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to follow up on something that was brought up during public comment, and there was, there was a concern over a particular section of the contract, whether that would essentially give the county a mandate. A mandate might not be the proper term, but, but basically allow the, the county to dictate scheduling of events that may conflict with, with events that we have here. And I, I didn't necessarily read the contract that way, but I could see where, where someone could have that. It talked about frequency, but not the scheduling. And I wanted to get your perspective there, and wonder if you'd have any concerns with us amending the proposed contract to make it clear that the scheduling is done here in Royal Oak.
Madam Protem, if I could address that. So this, to answer that question directly, I think the contract actually spells out very clearly and how Oakland County Parks and Royal Oak Parks and Rec will collaborate together. I mean, I think it speaks to, there are budget constraints in what Parks and Rec can continue to provide, and not only runs programming here in Royal Oak, but across our 910 square miles of Oakland County. And so, I think the contract spells it out very clearly. The, the type of, that additional programming of sending staff in to run programs and bringing these mobile units to be able to come in, obviously, I mean, would be done in coordination with staff, mapped out at least once a year, and probably more if staff determine is necessary to move things around. So I think the contract spells it out pretty clearly on how that arrangement's going to work.
Okay, all right. So if I'm hearing you right, the county couldn't dictate, hey, we're going to put this program on this day, you know, tough if it doesn't work for your schedule, Royal Oak. Is, is that-
The contract doesn't say that, no. I mean, like, this, I mean, truly is a collaborative process, and if, I can't even see a scenario where that's even possible. In fact, if anything, I, Sue takes my phone calls, usually me, like, I need park equipment now. And we were trying to get more activities and more programming coming here. So I've never seen a scenario in which Parks was imposing, I mean, the scenario, I mean, the hypothetical scenario that you outlined. And I understand, like, the concern. I mean, the contract spells out very clearly, there, I mean, these additional value of, of park programming, a lot of these mobile units, these mobile, these mobile Parks and Rec opportunities to be enjoyed for residents and visitors to this park all the time.
Okay. Would you see any problem with simply adding a couple clarifying words to indicate that the county's programming won't be in conflict with what program we have here locally?
I think the contract says that, all right.
Would you have any problem if we added some clarification there, just so that there's absolutely no doubt?
There is no doubt.
Mr. Johnson, and then Commissioner Gibbs?
I, I agree with Commissioner Woodward. But even if the, if the contract allowed for doubt, and even if the contract allowed the county to control it, the county is, the county park system is extremely cooperative with us. It's, we don't have conflicts over this kind of thing. In fact, it's, it's usually more the, the opposite, that the county is a scarce resource, that we're competing with other cities to, to get their programming and to get their assistance with our programs, to bring in their climbing wall, to bring in their stages, to bring in other features. It's not like they're imposing them on us.
Okay. Would, would it be okay if we simply have it part of our minutes here, that that's the county's understanding?
You, I'm fine with it being in the minutes that way. But this has been a very complex, long, drawn-out deal. It's already been approved by the Parks Commission. It's been approved by two subcommittees of the County Commission, and it goes to the County Commission-
On Thursday.
On Thursday.
Right.
I don't want to screw things up by, by trying to change it.
Right. And Mayor, and Mayor-
Let me say one more thing while, while you three are all up there. I want to thank the, the staff of Oakland County Parks, particularly Sue and Dan. I want to thank County Commissioner, what's your name again? Woodward?
No, I'm-
County Commissioner McGilvery. And also former County Commission Chairman Genjel, who was also instrumental in getting this done. And I also want to note the, the city commissioners that were particularly a part of this, being Commissioners Dubach, Commissioner Douglas, Mayor Fournier, and former Mayor Ellison attended a lot of those meetings.
And Mayor Protem, if I may, I mean, this, as you all know, has been years in the making. And I, when Commissioner Dubach first proposed the idea of forging this partnership, a project of this magnitude has, frankly, has never happened before. And it's been literally years of work and conversation and meetings, and many of you playing a very direct role of helping keep those conversations going forward, and sometimes got off track and got back on track. And we're here today, I think, to celebrate a incredible partnership between County Parks and, and the city of Royal Oak. This really, from my vantage point, I've been on the county board for many years, and an opportunity to chair that board now. We've, we've talked about making certain that the resources of county, of the County Parks Recreation, Parks and Recreation System is accessible to everybody, which means it makes sure those resources get spent everywhere. And Parks has done a tremendous job trying to bring programming where there isn't physical infrastructure, and here's an opportunity to actually extend physical infrastructure. Through this entire process, we also developed a policy for forging those partnerships with future opportunities. And so, this is a win-win by all measures. And I mean, Sue, I mean, I've enjoyed working with, and Dan, and Parks and Rec, but Sue's been hearing me, like, for years. I continue to talk about this, and to be at this point right now, as, as it was mentioned, that I plan, I mean, we plan on taking up this measure, which has enjoyed bipartisan unanimous support through this, through this process, and look forward to this partnership. I also want to make sure I recognize my colleague, and if I may give the mic to Commissioner McGilvery, who's one of our representatives of the commission that serves on Parks and Rec, who has been a tireless drumbeat, fighting for more access of Parks and Rec resources, particularly in the most densely populated area of, of Oakland County. So I don't know if you have any remarks, if you want to add to that.
Just one comment in regard to Mr. Lavasser's concern. I, I agree with the city manager that the, the county's got to work with the city. There's no doubt in my mind, and if there is, let me know that there's a problem, and I'll work at getting it taken care of. But I guess, to go through the whole process, this has been three and a half, going on four years, that we've been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We finally got to this final agreement, and to throw one sentence or two into an agreement to try to address your concern, there, first of all, there won't be a concern. I'm sure that the county will be more than happy to work with Johnny and his staff. Won't be any problems. And to slow that process down, I, government works slow, I understand, but this is incredible that it took this long, so.
I, I had Commissioner Gibbs, did you still, my, my question, concern has already been addressed. I just want to say thank you for the collaborative effort between City of Royal Oak and Oakland County to make the magic happen. This is, we've been waiting a long time. There's kids with, you know, the soccer kids and the football kids and the moms who want the splash pad that, that just want to see this happen. So I look forward to watching the unfolding of this. And I just hope that I can still snowshoe across Normandy Oaks. Do not take away my snowshoeing, okay?
All right, yeah. So it's been a long time coming, and, you know, thank you all for, you know, helping to get us here. Commissioner McGilvery, Commissioner Woodward, and Commissioner Genjel, who is instrumental in that. And I know staff has been going back and forth for all these years. So to be here today, and our primary concern is, oh, no, the county might bring us too many resources, to the point where we have to tell them to stop. I think that's a relationship I'm very happy to be a part of, and I'm glad that that's where we've landed, is that, that that's our primary concern. I'm excited to continue to work with you all to bring exciting programming for our community and the surrounding communities. And, you know, I'm thankful that you all recognized, as we did when we first did the Normandy Oaks deal, that this kind of green space in, you know, the southeastern portion, you know, highly, you know, population-dense portion of the county is just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And, yeah, it's been a long time coming, because we're, you know, you, like, like us, we're dedicated to getting it right. And I think we're going to get it right, and we're going to be seeing some serious action there this spring. And I believe we're planning on ribbon-cutting in the fall. Is that right? Next fall, next spring?
Next spring.
Next spring. So-
Most of the actual construction will be completed by fall, but, you know, a lot of grass needs to grow, and other plants need to grow.
Sure. We're going to raise the curtain, as Greg says, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, thank you all for your, for your support and cooperation and helping get this done. I'll move for approval of the contract as proposed.
Is there support? Commissioner Macy? Commissioner Lavasser?
I was just going to support it.
No, okay. I would like to add that in the Normandy Oaks study that we did, the, and, and we see this across the region, the number one thing that people want in parks and, and as a recreational amenity is trail-
amenity is trails. And yet, that was a, a price tag we couldn't, I mean, we, we worked very collaboratively as a committee and with the community to get the things that were both cost-effective and desirable in our Phase One. And to be able to add trails to Phase Two, which was highly coveted by many of the respondents, is a real boon to, to us, to the people of Royal Oak, and to people of adjacent communities. I'll point out also that kind of the, one of the standard Oakland County Parks motifs is a fee, entry fees, and yet here we have a completely free park, no fence around it. Um, people can go there and use it when they choose, but not after ten PM. Um, so you've brought us a, a wonderful asset that we don't have to, like, stick out our hand and tell people to pay us in order to be able to use it. And to me, that's the, the enormous gift to the people of Royal Oak and to our neighboring South Oakland communities, so thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
Very well said. Um, I just was gonna add a shout-out to the bridge, which we haven't talked about yet, but which was one part of the initial plan that I was really excited about. It's a bridge over that detention, retention, some kind of pond.
Retention pond.
Retention pond, uh, which I was afraid was gonna be kind of a side note to this when we weren't, when we weren't planning around. But putting that bridge there is gonna allow us to make that a beautiful unused area of the park, and connect it to Elks Park, where there is a nice parking lot right there that could go, lead us straight into Normandy Oaks. So shout-out to the bridge.
All right. Any, Commissioner Perusch?
The other benefit that I see to this whole arrangement is that Oakland County has a wonderful park system. I mean, beautiful, beautiful parks. Most of them are, are further out in the county. Um, but a lot of our residents don't realize that Oakland County has a park system, and are unaware of those other park opportunities out there. So I think to the extent that they realize that, oh, there is an Oakland County park system, let's see what else they have, it will also, I think, give them an opportunity to explore other recreational opportunities throughout the county, because they will realize there is actually an Oakland County park system in existence, which they don't realize now. They're familiar with the state system, and maybe with Huron, Clinton, um, and, and local, but the, the county park system is just not on their radar. So I think it will bring, bring that additional benefit as well, is to kind of expose them to other recreational opportunities that they weren't even aware of that were out there. So I think, I think that that's a good beneficial thing, too. So this, I'm excited about this.
Sue will arrange tours.
So any more happy talk? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Final item on the agenda, item number eleven, concrete contracts. Um, Commissioner Levasseur, you made a case earlier, but maybe reintroduce, tee up the subject for us?
I, I guess the first question is whether we've executed the contract with Colasanti for the, the subcontract for the concrete, uh, with, with regard to the police station, if that's been executed yet by the city clerk and by the mayor. It has been executed? All right. Uh, the, the concern I have, and I'll restate it again, uh, you know, Colasanti, in their role as construction manager, sought bids for the concrete work on the, on the, uh, police station. The low bid came in at just under a million dollars. Colasanti, through their concrete affiliate, bid a little bit over one point three million dollars. Through our discussion two weeks ago, the low bid was essentially disqualified, uh, because, uh, it was not pursuant to prevailing wage. It wasn't calculated pursuant to prevailing wage. Uh, I believe the, the conclusion of our city attorney was that, that it was a, as it wasn't a qualifying bid, and the other bids that came in were all above budget, that Colasanti could come in and have their bid accepted. And if I'm misstating that, Mr. Gillum, you know, please correct me, but that's my understanding. Uh, for the last seventeen days, I've been trying to find out exactly what was communicated to prospective bidders for the subcontract. I, I, I've yet to see anything that explicitly said, "You're gonna make your bid, and you're gonna make it, uh, with, with prevailing wage in there." You know, never mind, this, this, this commission right here never voted that we would only accept, uh, bids with prevailing wage on this city-centered project. Uh, but there was nothing in the bid process that I saw where Colasanti told prospective bidders, "Hey, you've got to, to make your bid based upon prevailing wage." Now, now, my thought is, you know, the library board, they did things the right way. They, they said, "We'll take all bids, just tell us whether it's prevailing wage or not prevailing wage." The recommendation that came into them, which we approved, was eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, it was without prevailing wage, uh, and that was something the library board decided that, that bid was so substantially less than the other bid, that it warranted adopting it even though there was no prevailing wage. We, we have a similar situation with this concrete here, where it was a good thirty percent or more less than the Colasanti bid, uh, and, and yet we, we disqualified that low bid based on language that was never presented to subcontractors, at least none that has been shown to me, and I've been asking for seventeen days.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, you were provided with the documents and a link to the website. You did send me something that I got to today, uh, saying that you couldn't find it in the website documents, so I spent a little time today and finished up during this meeting, and found two references to it, uh, in the web documents. The first is in the Construction Manager Contract, Section six point two point one. Wages of construction workers directly employed by construction managers perform construction of the work at this site or with the owner's prior approval at off-site workshops. Prevailing wages, as defined by Michigan Public Act one sixty-six of nineteen sixty-five, shall be paid to all construction workers employed by the construction manager and/or subcontractors. This contract is by reference made a part of any subcontractor's contract. That's clearly in the bid document. There's also a document titled prevailing wage requirement. That was the title of the document, uh, on the website.
I, I've yet to see that, and I, I went through their up, down, left, right. I, I'd love to see that document.
If you just go to the, the initial place where, where, where you clicked and entered the password, there's a list of documents, and one of them says prevailing wage requirements.
Okay, if, if you wouldn't mind pulling that and sharing that, I would appreciate that, because I, I did go and examine the, the documents you forwarded to me. I didn't see that.
You want to see the first part first? Before I lose it?
Oh, you mean the construction manager?
Yes.
No, I, I've seen that. I, frankly, I wouldn't expect a subcontractor to be, uh, you know, flies back in the, uh, the boiler point in the, in the construction manager's contract. I, I want to know, I mean, there was a list of like, I believe, forty items that Colasanti put forth, uh, as, as basically the requirements, and I think, uh, they, they were whittled down, and, and that's where I would expect a prospective subcontractor to look, to know what the requirements of the, of the, of the project are.
Need to find the document that had the password in it again, 'cause it's been timed out on me.
Commissioner Macy?
I'm just gonna, um, jump in here, because I, my understanding was different than yours about what happened with that bid. My understanding was that the bid came in, and they said, they said, with whether or not it was required, that this will be a prevailing wage bid, and all the bids came in, all the bids were opened, and then when they were having their meetings after, and they, they, and they said, "Oh, oh, did we see prevailing wage? Oops, our bad." And then they went back and said, "We'd like to rebid it now that we've seen all the other bids." That was my understanding, and that we thought that that was shady dealing. Um, is, is that not what happened?
That's not the way I interpreted it. Uh, you know, my, my understanding is there was a clause that Colasanti put out in the initial bid specs that was illegal, and that that was ultimately removed, and the bid deadlines moved back, and they may have relied upon that with a certain expectation, not corrected their, all their documentation. But I, I didn't get the sense that they were changing their, their bid. They, they were clarifying something that had pre-existed from, uh, a, a prior statement that Colasanti put in there that they shouldn't have.
Colasanti did send out a document that said union labor, and there was a correction sent out that union labor was not required. But prevailing wage was still in our requirements. And we did not reject the bid. The contractor withdrew the bid.
Well, just to clarify, that their letter said, "We're still willing to do it for this bid, or we're willing to do prevailing wage if we can add on the additional labor costs for us." That was their, their statement to us, and, and based upon what Plant Moran Cressa indicated to us, if we had added prevailing wage into that, we still would have been a good two hundred thousand dollars less than what, uh, the ultimate Colasanti bid was.
I don't think you can do it that way. I think, as I told you before, in an email, that you could reject all bids and rebid it. But you can't negotiate with a bidder.
Well, part of the bid specs were that we have the opportunity, and I'm not saying that there was a defect in the bids, but we have the opportunity, this is in Colasanti's bid instructions, all the subcontractors, uh, the expectations, we're gonna take the low bid, the, the low responsible bid, but it also said if there was a defect in the bids, we still, uh, retain the right to accept that bid. In, in this instance, it is such a substantial amount of money, a three hundred thousand dollar difference for the taxpayers of this city, that it's something that, uh, I, I don't understand how we, how we can not explore this, deal with this, and, and simply push this along, bypass the low bidder, give this to Colasanti to do.
Is there, Commissioner Perusch?
Uh, two things. First of all, I voted against putting this on the agenda, 'cause we don't have a construction manager here, who obviously has a huge role to play in, in this whole issue. So, you know, we're kind of assuming what he or she would be saying in this discussion, and, and they're not here. So I feel that we're all at a disadvantage because they're not here. So we can make all kinds of assumptions, but without them here being able to verify or not verify various things. We also don't have the, the contract language in front of us. The second thing is that my understanding of this issue is the same as Commissioner Macy's, that, um, the low bidder, you know, recognized, um, that they had made a mistake and, and made an attempt to, to renegotiate after all the bids were open, and that's just not a practice that we can condone. So, um, and I haven't been convinced yet that that's not the way things shook out. So, um, but without having the construction manager here to confirm that or to elaborate that on a little bit, we're all kind of shooting in the dark.
I do have the screen up, if you'd like to look at it.
I do think the, at our last meeting, or at that meeting, uh, the folks from Plant Moran Cressa made clear what they thought about the low bidder coming back and trying to renegotiate afterwards. And I appreciate the fact that that's not a good practice for them, nor should it be a good practice for us. I mean, there are matters of, of conduct and honor here, and once you start letting people come in with a low bid and then renegotiate it, you're going down a slippery slope towards places that you don't want to go, and certainly places we don't want to force a company like Plant Moran Cressa to go, in my opinion. So unless there's a motion here, Mr. Commissioner Dubach?
I don't have a motion. I've heard no due information, that makes me question the decision that was made last week. We asked all these questions last week of our contract manager and our economic development director. There are no new facts and no information. I have no reason to think the action was not in the best interest of the city.
I don't think so either, but I thought I'd ask. Um, so there being nothing to add to this discussion, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Support. Commissioner Perusch? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. I'm sorry, was that a nay, Commissioner Gibbs?
Oh, yes, nay, nay.
Wait, you don't want to adjourn?
The answer is, yes, I want to adjourn. But let's put it very clearly.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1799.01]